Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our meeting this afternoon. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second? Roll call.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yeah.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Motion has been seconded and approved. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll just do it.
Motion for the minutes.
Please use your pen. I'll make a motion to accept the minute.
A second?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley? Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion pass.
I need a motion to approve the minutes on the last meeting by December 26, 2022. We will now have public input.
Yes, ma'am. We have, is Ms. Barbara Roach here? Ms. Barbara Roach for public input. We have Mr. Durant is here. And also, we have Mr. Green. I need to get my sheet. Thank you. Thank you. So first, we'll have Ms. Barbara Roach.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I skipped a couple meetings. And I thought maybe the next time I come to see you all, I would be happy. Jumping up and down, but I'm not jumping up and down. Because I haven't seen anything change. Except we now have blinds in our large rooms. We have decent blinds. And we have air in the dam. Otherwise, if you look at that yard, it's getting worse. It's nothing but puddles. And it needs paving. I don't think it's been paved, maybe in 10 to 15 years. We still don't have a tennis court. Even though the county has told me that a lot of money was given to repair some of the tennis courts. And we're just jealous because if you look on the Facebook page, all the other communities are having these nice events. And they have grass. And they have all these other amenities. But we don't have anything. We're just working with the bare minimums. So I hope that the next time I come to see you, things will have gotten better. Do you have any questions?
We're going to refer this information to the person over at that division. And make sure they have your name and telephone number so they can give you an update when those items are taken care of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I need to give it to who?
You go.
Next, we have Mr. Willie Green. And he's from North Columbia Youth Baseball League. Basketball, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Willie Green. And I'm actually one of the board members of the North Columbia Youth Basketball League. And myself and one of the other board members here is Dan Carroll. We wanted to come out and kind of introduce ourselves again because we know we have new commissioners here. But one of the things that we wanted to talk about to kind of give you a background of our league. Well, our league has been, our North Columbia Youth Basketball League is basically based out of Crane Creek Gym. And it's a community league gym. So it's an inclusive league. And we normally have between prior to COVID, between 150 to 200 kids that participate in our league. And we go from ages four all the way up to 18, as well as we have cheerleaders. So one of the things that we have encountered as far as recently, and it happened last year, that our availability at the gym during basketball season has been cut. Normally, to be able to accommodate all these kids and the parents and the games, we usually are able to practice Monday through Thursday. Because again, we have at least 18-plus teams depending on the season and depending on how long it may take as far as, I mean, how many we may have as far as registering. So our issue is that Monday through Thursday, we're not getting enough practice time during the regular season to be able to accommodate and also have games on Fridays and Saturdays. Because we have games on Fridays and Saturdays to be able to take some of the stress off the gym on Saturday. So that way, they have other rentals or whatever, they're able to utilize that. The biggest thing about our league is, like I said, it's community-based. So everyone around that area from, you know, from the 29203 areas, they're able to come and participate. And we do a lot of mentoring. And as well, there's a lot of the coaches and volunteers, they come. And they may not even have kids there, but they want to give back to the community. And me personally, I have been volunteering in Richland County Park and Recorations for over 20 years now. And it's just something that I enjoy doing, giving back to our community as far as, as far as for the kids. And we also have a more family atmosphere. So the parents and the grandparents can come and they can enjoy the games without having a lot of, you know, issues or whatever going on in some of the places that we may have. And I guess the biggest thing is since we, it's only two community leagues, I think pretty much in Richland County. And we're one of them. And then I think it's Coffin Road, that's the other one, or East Columbia. So we're just asking you to kind of help us or see why this is becoming an issue as far as our practice time during basketball season being cut from four days to two days. And that's impossible. We're registering from, we're currently doing registration now. First day of practice is November the 1st. So if I have these people registering, collecting their money, and then I'm telling you, okay, on November, you can practice on Monday through Thursday. Come December 1st, you can no longer practice. What am I going to do with them? I mean, what can I do? And again, this is for our community. This is not something that, you know, making money off of, we're giving back, trying to keep these kids busy, trying to do something to show that we care. Just to give some idea of the impact that we have in our community is, some of the kids that we've had and we keep in contact with them are, I mean, my son for one who came through as a child. And he's in Harvard right now. He's, I mean, he was on the basketball team at Florida. He was, I mean, and he, I mean, we, this is some of the results of some of the kids that go through our program. They're becoming successful. And if we try to keep them out of trouble, keep them out of, keep them off the street. We also have mentoring parents, parents who have to become responsible by getting their kids there. So it's, I mean, it's positive. And we want to continue to be able to do it. And it just seems that, I mean, I think that we've done this like, two years ago, we had to come and do the same thing. And it seems like we keep getting squashed, getting squeezed out.
What's the reason that they, what's the reason that they shortened your timeframe? Is there a reason?
I'm not sure yet. That's why we come here to find out.
Two years ago, I remember when you guys came, but I don't remember the reason.
At that time, they moved us from Meadow Lake to Crane Creek to accommodate us. Because that we had grown, so they couldn't accommodate that Meadow Lake. So they gave us Crane Creek. Now, I think volleyball's over there. They're filling up with some other things that's, you know, I think some of the high schools are practicing there. But they're, you know, bumping us off.
Yeah. We'll have to figure that out.
Okay, Mr. Green, thank you so much. We appreciate your concern. And we appreciate you coming. But we're going to refer this also to the person that does scheduling and to make sure they get back with you and see what kind of allowances we could do, even if we have to maybe put you at another park to accommodate you. We're going to work with you. Thank you so much. Mr. Durant here.
You all right?
Next person.
I think Commissioner Miller is trying to get on the meeting. I don't know if somebody can reach out and give her a link. Tamika, can somebody give Commissioner Miller the link to get on, please? She's trying to get on.
Okay, that completes our public input for tonight. Next, we'll have the financial report from mine and the chief financial officer.
Good evening, Chair Lindsay, members of the commission board. I'd like to begin tonight by providing you with an update on the general and enterprise fund financials for the period July 1, 2022 through September 30, 2022. Before I begin, I also wanted to let you know, we did provide some updated.
They just gave me some papers, so I'm trying to. So to get this straight, we were just handed a new enterprise fund?
Yes. I was just about to say, we did provide some updated figures for the enterprise fund. We had to rerun that rapport because when the original report was run, it did not include some of the sales transactions for September. It was just due to the timing that the report was run. So this new report does include sales figures through September 30.
I'm sorry, Ryan, let's go back to the difference in this report. So you're telling me that I'm, oh, enterprise revenue, is that what's missing?
Yeah, there was missing revenue on the initial report. The initial report, you can disregard. What essentially happened was there were some sales transactions from T-Snap that had not been posted prior to running the report. So we reran it with that sales data. But the report that was just passed out, that incorporates all sales through September 30.
Okay, so the paper that I just got is the enterprise fund. Did you amend the general fund?
No.
So the general fund is not amended, it's the enterprise fund?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right.
So actually, did the figures change from your personal?
For general fund, there were no changes. For enterprise fund, yes, there was sales revenue that was not included in the initial report. So you can disregard that. The figures on the report that was just distributed includes all sales through September 30.
I don't know, because I don't see a difference.
Me either.
I don't see a difference.
We don't.
We're not, we're not seeing, we're not seeing a difference. The administrative revenue is the same, the program revenue is the same, and the enterprise revenue is the exact same. So we're not seeing a difference from what was shared in the packet with us versus what you just shared a second ago. I'm not seeing the change. So where is the change?
Was that the correct report that went out? Under fiscal year '23, total enterprise revenue should equal 297, 326? Change? No?
No.
Yeah, I think you gave us the wrong one.
Maybe I gave us the wrong ones.
Yeah, for sure, it's exactly the same.
Okay.
Can somebody get up and make us a copy so that we can have?
Yeah.
I can cover the general fund while they're making copies. Total revenues for the general fund for the three-month period were $762,000, compared to $1.21 million around this time last year. Represents approximately $443,000 decrease in revenues or approximately 36.8% decrease. I will say that, you know, the largest driver for that increase was property tax revenue. The decrease is mainly due to timing of the property tax payments that we received from the county. Please keep in mind that RCRC generally receives the vast majority of their property tax revenues during the final two quarters of the fiscal year. For program revenue for the three-month period, we generated $173,000 in revenue compared to $213,000 around this time last year. Represents approximately a $40,000 decrease in revenues or approximately 18.8% decrease. Youth camp and athletic program revenue were the largest drivers for the decrease from this time last year. Total general fund expenditures for this period were $3.49 million compared to $3.4 million this time last year. Represents approximately 2.6% increase or $88,000. The biggest driver for this increase would be fleet expenses. That would include fuel costs, repairs, and supply expenses. And IT expenses, which is essentially the items impacting that line item were the Cronos licensing and supply increase due to the purchase of card readers for the rep track implementation. For enterprise fund, revenues for the current period were $297,000.
Go back to general fund?
Sure.
What, you're in the red, correct?
We are currently, but keep in mind that that is typically going to be the case until we receive the majority of our property tax revenue in the last two quarters of the fiscal year.
And when approximately will you receive the next payment?
We do receive payments each month. But the vast majority of that revenue typically comes in January, February.
Ryan?
Yes.
Might be helpful to run a report for the trailing two years showing exactly how we compared. Because what happens is this happens every year that we're not getting our tax payments till sometimes the end of the second quarter of next year, which is close to May, June. And so we're always running in the red this time of year. But I think to give everybody a comfort factor, I think it'd be good, maybe if you could do a report for the trailing two years compared to this year, like maybe for the past couple months, let's say from August 1st through June 1st, you could just show where we stand in relationship, or you do it for the whole year, I don't care. But how we stand in relationship on the bottom line, year after year, each month. So it gives our group, our fellow commissioners a comfort factor to understand that we're okay. But even though it looks, you know, we just haven't been funded yet.
Sure. I can certainly provide that type of report. I could even, you know, provide those numbers prior to the next meeting.
Okay, it appears also that the program expensive, expenses has increased?
Let's see. The program expenses increased from last month? Yeah, that's typically, you know, what you would see. When we're buying supplies for programs that we offer, that's the line item that typically hits, the program expense line. Compared to this time last year, program expenses are coming in less than, you know, where we were at this point last year.
Ryan, I have a question about the fleet expenses. So how does that align with where we were?
Fleet expenses did increase. Part of that, part of what's driving that is increased fuel costs. That's a big portion. We also had a few repairs to some of our units. And we also had some supply expense increase. I believe we had one catalytic converter replacement, and those are fairly expensive. I believe that was around $7,000.
So we only had one catalytic converter replacement?
Just in the past, I believe, two months.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yes.
The safety and security expense is what I'm looking at.
Okay.
We just had a break-in.
Yeah, the safety and security expense typically is going to be the cost of providing like private, private safety and security at functions.
You know, I guess I'm looking at because we had that break-in. And a lot of our equipment was found completely out of area. That was, I guess, taken down the road. But we have no way of knowing how they got in there. Have no way of knowing. But it was inside, outside. We have, that's what I'm looking at, is what kind of security measures we'll be looking at.
So we have discussed options in regards to consolidating, not only like safety monitoring, but also like fire monitoring under one vendor. And so we would be looking to address some of those, you know, safety concerns and security concerns that we've been dealing with.
How would that affect as far as the expenses? Would that increase it much or?
It would really depend on the portfolio of services that we would move forward with. But in consolidating services under one vendor, you know, we may actually be able to save in some areas so that we can then expand, you know, coverage in others. But essentially, like, we need to, at this point, do our due diligence and ensure that we're, you know, we're getting the best price for these services. And we're, like I said, looking at, you know, what our options are currently.
So Ryan, just so I'm clear, we have a different vendor for fire protection? And then we have a different vendor for security? Like physical security at the parks? We have two different vendors for fire and security, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we actually have more than two. Some locations actually have a vendor that is unique to their location. So I believe, and I'm speaking to.
Right, I understand.
What was done before, but I think some of this was done piecemeal. So we're exploring, you know.
Right.
You know, getting everything up and under one portfolio.
And Commissioner Singleton, we're with our risk managers. Well, we're working to try to just come to one single vendor that we can work with and actually to help cut costs.
We do have a risk management person, right?
Yes.
I'd like to see their report. Don't they do a report monthly for you or weekly? When do they do their reports? Because we've never seen a risk management report.
I haven't been inquired about having a report.
She doesn't give you, or he doesn't, they don't give you a risk management report?
We do risk management updates.
Okay, updates.
But I have never, you know, been required to apply a report to the board.
I think if we saw the report, we'd have better answers and we would understand better what's going on.
And one of the, I think I'll go back to the budget concern is that we're seeing expenses. And one of the things I'm concerned about are the fleet expenses and security with regard to securing our vehicles that are left on site. We know we've had a theft of the catalytic converters. We know that that is in a situation that has been shared at our community level across Richland County. So I would like to see us move in the direction of one vendor, especially if we can decrease cost. But I do want to see our vehicles secured because I understand fleet expenses, you know, fuel and those things are beyond our control. But theft and damage to our vehicles that are on our property, that is in our control. And if we need to have a different level of security contract, then I certainly would like to see that happen. So I do look forward to hearing more about that. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. I'll move on to enterprise. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, our enterprise revenue would have $96,000. Went from 204.
Enterprise fund revenues for the current period were $297,000 compared to $273,000 this time last year. Represents approximately 8.8% increase from this time last year or $24,000. Green and range fees and cart rental revenue were largely driving this increase. And total enterprise fund expenditures for this period were $236,000 compared to $271,000 around this time last year. Represents approximately 12.8% decrease or a $34.7,000 decrease. Capital outlay expense was the largest driver for this decrease as well as general golf operating expenses.
The capital, I want to make sure we got three pages up here on this report. So the capital improvement expense is $7,000, is that correct?
Yeah, $7,084.12. The correct report is the one where total revenue is 297, 326.
Really, the only difference? Sounds, the only difference is in your enterprise revenue, which is the third line on revenue. The actual revenue for, I guess, thus far is 296, 84 versus what was reported in your packet of 204. So that's essentially a difference of about $85,000. That must have come off that computerized system.
Yeah, it's a T-Snap system. The other line item, I. Um, the other line item, I, I will direct your attention under expenses. The non-operational expenses, uh, did increase in, as well, and that's essentially, uh, the, the cost of the, uh, the goods that were sold. And that, that comes from the T-Snap system as well. Were there any questions?
We're not even read on this one, no?
No.
This one's our moneymaker. Um, Ryan, unrelated to either one of these reports, but financially, financial, I'd asked last, at the last meeting about, um, the chance, you know, what the options are, and how do we go about trying to get the cost of living raises for the employees? Has there been any work done on that, do you know?
Um, I did look to see if there was any, um, any options in, in regards to, um, uh, receiving additional property tax allocations from the, the county. Um, however, as, uh, Sarah from Hope Flynn had indicated, um, she, she was essentially right on the money in, in that, um, property tax bills were already being prepared and, and we're about to go out, so, uh, there really wasn't a whole lot of leeway, um, to request additional property tax funds from the county.
So.
Um, at this point, uh, our, our only options would be to either, uh, reallocate funds internally, uh, or, um, uh, explore options, uh, you know.
Can you?
External funding options.
Can you look at, you know, I don't know what the cost of living raise was for state and, you know, county employees, but whatever that was and how that would affect, how much money we would need for that? Can you say, is it a hundred thousand, two hundred, well, I don't, not right now, obviously.
I could actually give you, eh, I mean, cause our, our.
Can you give me that amount that we would need, and then we can maybe methodically look at trying to help figure this, this out? Whether we go to the county council and make a special request, if we can, for something else, just to get the money to do it, or if we have to re- reallocate expenses, which were, our parks are in such horrible condition right now, it makes me nervous, but we do need to figure out how to take care of the employees.
Our, our total, um, seller-in-france expenditures comes in, uh, fairly close to ten million dollars. Um, so each percentage, uh, increase would be roughly a hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, a two, two percent increase would be two hundred, three percent, three hundred.
No, two hundred thousand, you're right.
Two hundred thousand, great.
Two hundred thousand for a two percent, three hundred thousand, and so on.
And can you walk me through that rough math again, please? You said ten percent on?
It's one, one percent of, uh, ten million, uh, would be one hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So, a two percent increase would be two hundred.
Just give us a written report on that, this, you know, later on this week, just send it to us.
Sure. Okay.
And then, absolutely, if there was, let's just say it is, you said it, it is roughly ten million, or, or payroll?
Yeah, yeah, like a, a, a two percent increase would be roughly two hundred thousand.
What was the actual cost, what was the state cost of living, uh, increase to employees, you know?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
No, I, I do not officially know what it is.
All right, well.
Typically, it's around three.
Figure out what it is, and then maybe you guys have some suggestions of where we could possibly reallocate. So, if we're allowed to even do that, and you say we're not, I don't know, but let's see if we can figure it out.
Give us a written report, so I can, we can, we can do something.
Yeah, thank you.
But, any other questions for Ryan?
Yeah, Ryan, can we, can we work on getting them their longevity payback too, since we trying to get the employee? Employee should have been the first one, you always say, employees who run the company. If we can get the longevity payback and give the employees their cost of living raised, I think the whole, the whole Riston County Recreation Commission would be happy with it.
Sure, we, we can look into, into that as well. Um, when I crunch the numbers, I can do multiple scenarios and I, I can include, uh, longevity payments as well.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next would be unfinished business. At our last meeting, we had a proposal for a fee increase. And tonight, we have a document, we have new documentation showing the increase.
Yes.
Basically, the fees will increase only ten dollars. We haven't had an increase since, um, twenty nineteen, so we feel now it's time to, um, increase our fees.
Yes, Commissioner, so, um, yes, at the last board meeting, um, a proposed fee schedule was brought to the board for review, um, as it was approved last in twenty nineteen. Uh, at the request of some of the board members, some of the fees were changed, and the revised proposed fee schedule that you have received tonight, um, have been updated for your review and approval. Um, the, again, the proposed fee schedule is listed as the description item, the fee being charged currently for that item, and then the proposed fees to change, or say the same for that item. Um, if there's an item that's proposed in the column that notes, uh, delete, um, it means that we do not need that additional fee as it may be covered under another item, and we do not need that description. Uh, this layout is for your review and approval. Uh, once approved, fees will be updated on all applicable, um, documents, policies that require updates, and a notice to the public will be implemented per the effective date. Uh, so you should have a copy of the, um, revised, you know, fees.
Do we have any questions? Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposed fee schedule, the revised, I believe, the second revised, I believe, second revised fee schedule.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
No.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, the new fee schedule has been seconded and approved. Next, we'll move on to new business. Report from the Pro Citizens, um, Wealth Management Department. They did a presentation on a last meeting, um, a couple of months ago, July eighteen.
Yes, and they've come, um, to, today, David, and they've come to, um, give a updated, um, report on their, um, presentation and numbers.
Uh, good, good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you again for inviting us to, to come and speak with, uh, with you all commissioners. Uh, I just put together an, an updated, uh, presentation, uh, really to show you, uh, this is good news. Uh, treasury yields have increased significantly since, uh, July of this year. Uh, I put in the, uh, presentation that was in your packet, three sample portfolios, um, on pages five, six, and seven. Um, and the, the difference in the portfolios is, is really based on, uh, duration or length of, of the portfolio itself. The first one is a zero to one-year portfolio that currently is yielding three point six eight percent. You extend duration to zero to two years, uh, it bumps up to three point eight eight percent. And zero to three-year portfolio, uh, the, uh, current gross yield is four point oh three percent. Uh, to give you a relative benchmark to where that was back when we met in July, the zero-three, zero to three-year portfolio was currently yielding two point nine percent. So that's, uh, an increase of over one percent in that short period of time. Um, so that's, 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 that's the good news. Uh, I'll be working with Tamika and Ryan to, uh, place, uh, the reserve assets if we're fortunate enough to, uh, earn your business in an appropriate portfolio that provides for the liquidity that they're looking for, and, and match that up with, uh, also the yield that they're looking for, uh, to appropriately invest and manage those assets. Any questions that, um, the committee may have?
And so, I think everybody that we talked about, about the money, can, can you explain, I'm just looking at the zero to three-year?
Yes, sir.
The, um, the bar graph?
Yeah, the, the bar graph, uh, represents, uh, uh, lique- a liquidity schedule, uh, based upon anticipated assets of, of six million dollars, uh, invested in a zero-to-three-year treasury portfolio. Every quarter, you'll have, uh, five hundred thousand dollars that will be maturing. Uh, that five hundred thousand dollars, uh, can't be simply reinvested or liquidated upon the needs of, uh, the Recreation Commission. So, this provides for, uh, quarterly liquidity, uh, in the amounts of five hundred thousand dollars based on a six million dollar deposit.
Um, I do have a question, so when the, for the quarterly liquidity, what happens is, will you get, will Ryan, uh, signal to you that we want to reinvest?
Yeah.
Or is it just?
Yeah.
How does, how does that communication happen?
How, how that communication set, set up is on, on the front end. Uh, we'll, we'll ask, uh, Ryan and Tamika, uh, if they want to express any liquidity needs. Typically, we'll do that at least ninety to a hundred and eighty days out in advance, right? So our, uh, our investment team is, uh, properly positioned, uh, for liquidity of those assets. So that's something that we'll discuss upfront. Um, and then, if, if it's something that, um, Ryan says, hey, unless you hear from us, just, just reinvest. That's typically how we work with most of our clients, but it's a, a case-by-case basis, whatever they, they feel comfortable with.
And if I remember right, like I said, his presentation was back in July, that we looked at charts that showed that this was going to bring an additional, uh, hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to the, that was at that time.
Yeah, what, really, where, where we're looking at, Robert, right now is, if, if you look at the zero-to-three-year portfolio, net of fees, uh, and based on six million, the fees would be, uh, point three five one percent, or thirty-five basis points. You'd be looking at, uh, net return, uh, of, or earnings of close to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on an annualized basis.
So.
Yes.
That's just found money for us. It helps us pay for.
Pay for a lot of things.
Like we've been talking about, but.
Right.
That being said, um, is it a, is it a rolling, like, are we locking in at that percent that we, you should, like, if we say we want a three-year portfolio?
Yeah.
Are we locking in at that rate, or is it, is it a, like, a, a changing rate with whatever Fed's at?
Yeah, it, it, it would be, uh, if, if we took a snapshot today and invested those assets based on this illustration, if that portfolio was held to maturity, you know, uh, three years down the road, it, it would, it would provide for, uh, a gross return of four point oh three percent. As monies are reinvested, uh, they'll be reinvested at the yields that the market is bearing at that point in time, correct? So the, the actual return of the portfolio, uh, will be, uh, in essence, changing up or down a little bit at the end of each quarter, because those assets that mature are going to be reinvested at whatever the treasury yields are at that particular point in time. Hopefully, that's, uh, is that clear?
It is.
Okay.
So, I think that with the way that rates are right now, and the way that I s- not I, but the way that I think that the world thinks they're going to at least trend for a little bit longer, we should take advantage of, uh, the potential windfall that we can get over the next six months to a year with increasing interest rates. So, my, my, my opinion is to, to do this as fast as we can, that, that's just me.
I agree.
Found money.
Any other comments or questions? In the comments? Need a motion to approve this investment with Pro Citizens Bank?
Okay. I'd go, like to go ahead and make a motion to approve for Citizens', uh, um, proposal for, yeah, for the four-point, you know, the zero to three, your return portfolio.
Okay.
Am I saying that right?
That zero to three, yeah, uh, your portfolio, that's correct.
I, a second.
Go call. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The motion has been seconded and approved. Okay, for item number nine. Eight, eight, okay, I'm sorry. They gotta type it, yes, okay. Number eight, other business. Uh, we'll now have the interim report from the, the interim director.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so just give you an update on, um, projects, we have, uh, Firesgate Athletic Complex. The fencing on Field One has been repaired, um, we are still repairing, um, still need to repair the gutters at the restroom, um, change out the electric box, and then also repair, um, leak at the concession. Uh, Coffin Row Park, the canteen is still currently being renovated, um, and we need to replace the cabinets at the, um, in the canteen. Uh, other items, um, at the chair's request, a binder, um, with copies of board-approved RCRC policies and procedures have been provided for all of the board members, so you should have your binder there. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the Opera Grant applications were submitted, we submitted for two categories, which is the Youth and Recreation Services and the broadband services, um, in underserved areas. Um, I did receive an email, um, send you an email just to update you on, um, that we had submitted those. Um, and then we are preparing, um, our vehicle documentation to be completed for state auction. Uh, once this is finalized, we will, um, let the board know when we are ready to move forward with that process.
How many vehicles do we have that we can auction off?
Do we know how many vehicles?
Uh, Ms. Williams, I have a question. Do we have any idea when they will let us know about our grant application, whether it's been approved, denied? You know, I'm, I'm a little anxious on, on that, Brenda, any idea?
Well, according to, um, their timeline that they had, um, put out, it was November, they'd be, like, fully reviewing the applications, and by December, um, applicants will be notified.
Thank you.
I look forward to that. The two applications were submitted, and did they give you a response to whether it was acceptable?
They gave us a confirmation email.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Eighteen vehicles that are, um, getting prepared for.
Yeah, eighteen vehicles that we can put up for auction? Very good. And what will we need to get that moving?
Yeah, I think they may want you to go to the mic.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm Latasha Jones, I'm, I'm the risk manager for the agency.
Latasha, could you please speak into the mic?
Yes, ma'am, is that better?
Thank you.
I'm Latasha Jones, I'm the risk manager for the agency. Um, we have approximately eighteen vehicles that are prepared to go to auction. Um, one of the documents that was required to get it ready was a spreadsheet which I compiled, as well as the eternity and document which is required by state surplus. I have sent all of that information over to, um, Tayana, who is our property manager, and I believe she's provided Ms. Tamika with the copy as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So Tayana would get the information?
In, you hear me?
Okay.
Um, yes, and we'll finalize on everything we need so we can then bring it to the board to get this process going.
Okay, so as soon as that's done, do we have to have another board meeting to approve that?
And that's what, that's, I need to, that's what I need to do is check with our policies and see how that is. Come to the board and, and whatever process that we have for procurement.
I think if it's under the policy, you don't have to come back and do that. I think if you're aware of what's going on.
Right.
You, obviously, if you want that to happen, thank you for expressing that. And I don't think that would require enough.
I don't want to hold it up.
Yeah, so that's why I said.
That's asking, because as soon as you get the paperwork completed?
I have compiled all of the paperwork. I have all of the keys. I have all of the vehicle titles as well as the original builder sales. I have a complete file ready to go.
So we have all the titles?
Yes, ma'am.
The proper paperwork?
Yes, ma'am.
I think the board members would agree we could do that auction?
I agree. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, let's move forward.
All right, thank you. So understanding that according to the policy, if we can move forward, we can go ahead and don't have to bring it back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you all just don't mind sending us an email to let us know that eighteen vehicles or twelve or whatever that final number is, just so we know. But I think that's appropriate, just in the interest of time. Please move forward.
Thank you. Did anyone have any other questions? Or anything else wanted? I have a question. Um, I noticed that we have new, two new job positions, a comptroller and a grants manager. Uh, we have money to pay these two positions according to the budget? And I'd like to know what the grants manager will be responsible for.
Yes, ma'am. And in the budget for this year, we have funded the grants manager position for a half year. Um, we decided to go ahead and at least started looking for applicants for that position. Um, our contractor will be ending soon, the end of this month, with one of the vendors that we were using to assist with grants. Um, so yes, this position is funded. Um, also, the comptroller position is funded, it's just being re-titled. We currently have a position vacant, um, that we'll be vacating for that position. And, um, that will be, that is also covered in the budget.
So the comptroller, um, is this a new position or this person's leaving?
Um, I don't, I'm not sure if, if continuation of personnel matters or positions need to be addressed. But we do currently have a person that vacated a position and a position is being, um.
So the comptroller, it will be refilling a position?
Yes.
Okay, but this, um, grants manager is a new position?
It is a new position that's been funded for half of this year, this fiscal year.
I'd like to see the job description because normally, uh, grants writers usually like, they'll do something in addition to sit there writing grants.
I can pass you along the job description.
Okay, and I'd also like to see, um, how much the payment, how much they'll be making a year. Um, I'm really concerned with our janitor positions. Understand we're only paying them twelve dollars an hour. And I think that's the most minimum you could pay a person. And I'm all for somebody at least making a living, which would be, to me, approximately a fourteen dollar, at least fourteen dollars an hour. I think twelve is, has to be one of the lowest positions we have. And if all possible, I think it should be raised to fourteen dollars an hour instead of twelve.
Commissioner, we'll.
Couple of comments.
Commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to, um, we're about to, we'll look in the budget and see what we'll do. But ultimately, we'll fund it based on the, the information that we submitted for a budget and the current hourly rates according to our compensation plan. So I just want to just inform you about that.
So when we start getting money from the new First Citizens deal, let's say it's in three months, four months, start seeing the windfall, it'd be nice to just get a proactive plan to try to implement some of the stuff that we've talked about, you know? And, and then maybe the chairwoman can help you prioritize for us or somebody on this board, you know, commission can help you prioritize what's important, such as maybe it's cost of living, maybe it's what you're talking about with janitorial or whatever. But I think that it's just got to be done methodically and smart. And, uh, because we know your budget's obviously fixed. But possibly there's some reallocation here. Maybe you don't need the grant writer now. Maybe that money can be put towards this, or maybe there's a dual role that somebody can do. I don't know. That's, that's way beyond my pay grade, but I'm willing to help you in any way from advice that I can. But I think that's the kind of stuff that I think we need to try to do. Secondly, um, something that we implemented a couple of years ago, and I, I'm, I'm happy to see that you guys have passed it out, the items presented during public input. But there's no response. And for instance, Gloria Cannon on July eighteenth said, new blinds. I don't know if she needed new blinds, but then obviously I heard Mrs. Roach talk about the new blinds. So maybe that got fulfilled. And, um, it, it's just if we can kind of just get some sort of, you know, obviously, you know, the guys tonight with the basketball, that needs to be figured out. But it gives us a peace of mind, at least at the next meeting that we know it's been taken care of. And from this sheet, I appreciate that you guys have filled it out, but there's no other sort of follow up. So I'd appreciate, and I'm, I hate piling on work, but this is something that was getting done. And I think it's very important to keep this moving forward if we can. Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I, I want to echo what Commissioner Lapine has said. Uh, I too agree that we've got to prioritize the salary and the payment of our staff before we bring on new staff, period. It's just, that's just where we are. Uh, we've got to take care of the people that currently work for us before we bring in new people. Um, I think that is our responsibility to do that. Um, definitely need a comptroller. I have no issue with that. Definitely happy to hear about the grant applications and do feel like there is a need for a grant manager. Um, but I am concerned too about the, um, providing a, a livable, a livable wage uh, for our, uh, staff members, especially if we aren't given raises. We certainly need to have that, uh, salary, uh, at least at a living wage. So whatever we can do to prioritize and know that, I think I'm seeing heads shaking up here. So it is a priority for us. Um, I do agree. Thank you so much for the, uh, summary on the public input. And I, I, I agree with Commissioner Lapine, you know, do we remedy the things in July? The people, the stuff that they asked for, do, do we remedy that stuff? Or, or at least provide us with a status. But I do, I do appreciate having the public input summary. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me say that I, I do think that the janitors have been, you know, underpaid for a long time. And it's time to pay them. And what we have to do, we have to vote on giving them a raise up here? If we have to do that, then we'll do that. But the janitors need to be paid theyself.
I think we can let, um, Ms. Williams and Ryan get together and, um, formulate a plan for us with regard to how we do that. So we'll look forward to hearing what, if anything, can be done. Obviously, given that that is a flaming hot priority for us at this point, okay? And if that means that we have less supply expenses, um, I, I don't know what that looks like. But if you would take a look at that for us out of a general fund, marketing expenses, program expenses, I mean, what, what can happen, if anything?
Um, one other thing I'd like to comment, I understand that one of the employees had a baby, a little baby girl. And, uh, want to commend her, she was back at work. And, uh, I just think it's something we should celebrate.
Yeah, babies are good.
Babies are good.
Okay, next we'll, um.
See, we have. Bit, uh, Ms. Venable, there we go.
Felicia.
Good evening, Madam Chair, commissioners.
Good evening.
Since our, uh, meeting on last month, we did have some activities here at the Richland County Recreation Commission. And we thank you for your attendance in our programs and activities throughout Richland County. On September the twenty-seventh, we had the grand reopening of our tennis center. We'd like to say thank you to Councilwoman Gretchen Baron, uh, from the USTA, Dr. Jerry Odom, Shirley Mills, Jennifer Gregg, and Nan Smith. They all spoke at the ceremony. And we'd like to say thank you to our chair, Lady Ms. Donzetta Lindsay, for your attend, attendance and participation on that day. So it was a phenomenal event, and we appreciate everyone's participation. On September the twenty-ninth, we had a less sip and chat at Gaston Park Community Center. We had twenty-eight attendees in the lower Richland area. And they were all dressed up. On October the seventh, we had a pink-out, um, chair volleyball at Meadow Lake Park. Seniors actually from the Adult Activity Center had, here at Park Lane, participated. And they've gotten so large that they actually have to go to Meadow Lake Park, which they can't play volleyball here, but they don't mind the commute to go there. But they participate every first and third Friday at ten AM at Meadow Lake Park. And this time, they called out the RCRC staff because they wanted to challenge us to a game of chair volleyball. So these ladies are very vicious. And I, uh, challenge our board members, if you're available, I'd on the first or third Friday to come out to watch this chair volleyball. I was there and we had a great time. And I'd like to commend Jelisa and the staff. They do a phenomenal job. The seniors absolutely love it. At Pine Grove Community Center, we had a domestic violence awareness brunch, and that was held on October the eighth. And they had thirty-eight participants. We had a walk to In Alzheimer's. Uh, Ms. Leslie Wilson created our shirt, so I want to give her a round of applause. She did a phenomenal job. And we had staff in attendance. And RCRC out of their own pockets donated four hundred dollars towards this call. In total, they raised a two thousand, two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. And they had over a thousand people to participate. Teen Hawks was held at, uh, Killian Park on October the fourteenth, and they had seven participants. And just on yesterday, we hosted the, uh, Richland County High School Player of the Year Football Skills and Drills Combine. And we'd like to say a special thank you to Senator Scott and Councilwoman Baron for their financial support for this event. And as I said, it was held on October the sixteenth at Meadow Lake Park. And we'd like to say thank you to Commissioner Singleton and to Commissioner Lindsay for coming out. And we had over a hundred participants to register all skill levels for this particular event. Think we had closer to a hundred and fifty people to register. And, uh, that registration took place. And then one day, I think we had over ninety participants, um, to register. We'd like to say special thanks to Lisa. She did a phenomenal job. To A.D., Chris, Leslie, Quincy, and Josh. We also like to say thank you to our athletic staff, staff, excuse me, property management staff, and our admin staff. So thank you for everyone that came out.
Excuse me, one note on that?
Yes.
I believe Representative Chris Hart also made a donation.
Yes.
I'll leave him out. He was there also.
Absolutely. Now, I apologize for leaving out, uh, Mr. Chris Hart. That was a phenomenal event. Our upcoming events, uh, we're currently having a booth at the South Carolina State Fair that runs from, uh, I think it started last week on the thirteenth until the twenty-third. We're located in the Goodman Building. So if you're at the South Carolina State Fair, please stop by our booth. Uh, we also have a blood drive at Valentine Community Center on October the twenty-eighth. We have Halloween events on the twenty-eighth at Gaston Polo Park, Hopkins, Eastover, and Meadow Lake Park. We have a character meet and greet at, uh, Coffin Road Park on Sunday, October the thirtieth. Also, on the thirtieth, we have a fall festival at St. Andrews Park. We have family-friendly Halloween events, um, on Halloween. And those will be held at Bluff Road Park, at Firesgate, Polo, and, uh, Blythewood. In November, on November the tenth, we have a veterans brunch and health fair at the Gynas Ferry Adult Activity Center. And also on the tenth, we'll have teen night hawks at Meadow Lake Park. And then on November the sixteenth, we'll have a Thanksgiving program at Hopkins Park. Thank you.
I want to commend you, um, we have such little amount of money, but we do such great activities.
Absolutely.
We have to give credit to the staff.
Absolutely, phenomenal staff.
Volunteer your time and your money and your efforts.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay.
On number nine, I need a motion to adopt the agenda with a correction to the agenda. On the agenda under executive session, it states personal matters related to executive director's position. It should state personnel matters related to executive director's position. And I get a motion to accept the agenda with corrections.
So moved. You're good.
Okay. Now we need a motion to go into executive session.
You could do it.
All right, let's do it. I like, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. There was no action taken in executive session. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming and participating.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.